Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at five P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. We will be going to executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going to executive session for the following two reasons. Master on Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares, and I do, Excel Recycling LLC versus Town or Free Town. And second, for Master on Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate, if the chair so declares, and I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Without, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zaker?
Yes.
Selectman Brunwell?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Welcome, everybody. We are back from executive session, back in the open session. First, we're gonna have George just take care of some personnel board issues, or items, real quick, and then we'll jump into some other regular board selection.
We have a few appointments. I'll read through them, and if you have a hold on any of them, we'll hold it. Otherwise, we'll just take one vote.
Yep.
Kevin Desmaris is board health agent effective one eighteen twenty-two to six thirty twenty-two. Hold. Put no hold on that guy.
You're voting with him?
Yeah, I just wanna discuss. Tim McIntosh is part-time assessor senior clerk effective twelve twenty-two, twenty-one through six thirty twenty-two. Courtney Reitman to Cultural Council effective twelve fourteen twenty-one through twelve fourteen twenty-four. Sarah Dudley to Cultural Council effective twelve fourteen twenty-one through twelve fourteen twenty-four. Alexander Galtz to Cultural Council effective twelve fourteen twenty-one, twelve fourteen, twelve fourteen twenty-four.
I'll make that motion?
He has a hold on it, so.
Okay, so, so B through E?
Yep.
Wanna just get that out of the way?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make the motion to appoint, make appointments B through E on the agenda.
Okay. Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On Kevin Desmaris. I do have some concerns on that because we're not following protocol.
How so?
How so? We advertise for position. I know we talked about it, but thought about this, and there is one slight issue that I wanna bring up. We advertised for a board of health agent with qualifications, and we did not receive any applications that met the qualifications. And so that's where we are right now. And we're going to give this position.
If we, I strongly disagree with the word "give." So please don't use that term.
Alright.
Because you're not giving him anything. He's, it's deserved. I'll let you finish your call, sorry.
We're going to appoint someone to the position that doesn't meet the qualifications of the original posting. And we, we're going to hire someone where we haven't given other opportunities to other applicants that would meet the same requirements. So it's, it's not apples and apples.
That's what I was thinking. Sorry, go. No, yeah, go.
So this was our, you know, I was in charge of, I say I was in charge. Myself, Luann, we were all a committee, right? Where we went out and we, we did one round of applications. This was actually our second round of applications. Kevin, application came in. We interviewed a couple of people. Kevin came in front of us. Couple of things about Kevin. Twenty-two years on conservation, twenty years on planning, has an associate's degree, was in the military, received, you know, has medical background in the military, helped set up different emergency response things around town, glowing recommendations from his board that he currently works for, as well as people out in the professional field.
Just wanna make it very clear, this is not about Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay. This is about postings.
But we also posted that we were willing to train. So we've done that with a lot of things within this town.
Was that in the posting?
Yes.
Because we, I remember this conversation when we talked about this originally too, and that's what I was gonna say, is that, is that we, it's almost impossible to get any, any individual who has all three, or you know, of the disciplines that are required for the board of health agent. So, you know, we said if we have somebody who's, you know, has one of those, or we think has the ability to get those certificates and those kind of trainings, then we'd rather get a good person and we do the training, rather than try to just hire someone.
That's not the issue.
Yeah.
But that would work.
Yeah.
But I didn't see the posting that basically would allow other people that didn't have the qualifications required in the original posting.
I can't see.
And we had some people who were far less qualified, and I'm not, you know, I'm just speaking any specifics, but that turned in applications for the position. So clearly, it was, you know, people understood that they didn't need every qualification in order to apply for this position, because.
Looking at the technicality of this.
It was in the application, George, when you came in office, I showed you. Maybe Luann has it up on her computer where she can show me.
No, not the application.
Yeah, on the posting, yep.
Okay.
So the highlighted part, there is the, whoever can entrust me is willing to provide the necessary training and licenses for this candidate at the town's expense.
Okay, let's stay in correct. Alright.
Alright. So shall we vote on that then? So I'll make the motion to appoint Kevin Desmaris as board of health agent effective one eighteen twenty-two through six thirty twenty-two.
All in favor?
Aye. Alright, great. Now move on to, it's four, Gentleman four.
Okay. Adjust the effective end date of the appointment of Debbie Petty to the bylaw review committee from six thirty twenty-two to three thirteen twenty-two.
Is this just to line up with your contract? Okay. Yep, so I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on the letter from Sergeant, no, we don't have to discuss that.
You have to accept it.
Yeah. Okay, number five. Letter from Sergeant Edward Dwyer regarding its requirement incentive dated twelve three twenty-one. This is a union matter, and we need to send that back to the union rep, right?
Yes.
So we can add on that today.
Oh, yeah, I write it, so.
Okay. And then the last one is vote on the hourly rate of sixteen fifty for the cemetery section effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, seems reasonable to me.
He's currently maybe at minimum, and he goes the grass and takes care of the cemetery.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
We got that, right?
Now, back, back to me. So we have meeting minutes from eleven fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and eleven twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right now, number eight, presentation from Lake Cam on what services they can provide for the Free Town regarding the PEG, yeah, PEG channels, coverage, and meetings in the future. Hello?
Good evening.
Just, yeah, state your name and.
Good evening, my name is Jose. I'm the executive director of Lake Cam, and I'm here to present our options on peg access coverage for Free Town. Apparently, Free Town is receiving Lake Cam's education channel, and we'd like to expand that to all three channels, public access and government channel. And in your package, there was a proposal for the full service option, which would include the same agreement that we have with Lakeville, which is Lakeville sends all the monies received for peg access to Lake Cam, and we provide them with as much, as many services as we possibly can. And as of two thousand and nineteen, before the pandemic, we provided over five hundred programs per year.
And how much money is the, that, the monies received by Lakeville that goes directly, or I guess, for Free Town, how much would that be a year that we're currently receiving?
Based on the new contract, as I understand it, it's approximately eighty-five thousand dollars per year. Is that correct, Luann?
I think so.
I think that's only based on two, two payments on the new Comcast contract so far of approximately twenty-one thousand dollars per quarter. There's also an additional, I think, ten thousand dollar payment that Comcast makes for capital equipment.
Okay.
Per year. Are there any other questions?
So can I ask you to expand a little bit more exactly the services that you're providing, you know, compared to what we're currently getting?
Currently, currently, the education channel force is coming from Lakeville, and we've been providing approximately a hundred and ninety-two, approximately, as of two thousand and nineteen. The numbers have gone down the last two years, obviously, because there have been fewer events to cover.
Yep.
And even fewer sports to cover at the high school level. We're proposing to cover in government meetings, five to six meetings per month. Currently, there are two or three per month. I believe last year was thirty-six that were covered, if I'm not mistaken, in Free Town? Okay. Based on the information I gather, and I'm looking to double that. At least double that. Now, the question is whether or not Free Town is agreeable to having Lake Cam cover that many meetings, and whether the boards and committees are accepting of that coverage. That's a whole nother question.
And now, so we like post our videos now, right, to YouTube? You know, we do that, like, is that, would that still happen, or?
Yes.
We do that internally.
Internally, okay. I just didn't know if that was, you know, if that's a service that you would provide, you know, that just.
We do provide service to Lakeville. We publish everything we do for them off and put it on Vimeo, and then also on our Facebook page.
Gotcha.
So I'm looking to increase the amount of meetings and programs on the, currently, there are very few public events or public channel events that are covered in Free Town. I'm also looking to combine the Lakeville and Free Town public channel and the Lakeville and Free Town government channel, so that Comcast in particular, you'll be able to see Lakeville's meetings and vice versa, which is kind of a double-edged sword, but some people have said to me that they would appreciate that, that be able to see the meetings going on in Free Town on Comcast.
Makes sense.
So that's an additional side benefit. If you, if you're not interested in that full service option, the other option is continuing what we're doing right now, which is just the education channel. And the only caveat to that is, we have, we have not been able to come to an agreement for the two thousand and twenty-one year for the education channel due to some turnover on especially town administrators. So if you do not want to go to the full service route, we still would need to sign a contract for two thousand and twenty-one and have payment for two thousand and twenty-one, because we continue providing that service.
Okay. Yeah, so that's something we, that needs to be taken care of sooner than later, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, but are there any other questions?
No, that was very, I'm not gonna make a decision tonight. I wanna digest it a little more, but I appreciate you coming out and presenting.
I guess the only other, I have one quick question is, the added services you provide to Lakeville, do you see like, I guess, what, what can we say to our, the people on the rest of the, right? To say, hey, you're gonna get all this, and is there a heavy use? Are you seeing a big pull on that information from Lakeville for all these additional things?
We, we know that in Lakeville, we're being watched, especially on our government channel, to people keep up with the news in town in particular. But also in, in the, for the educational channel, we know, we even sell DVDs still, people buying our recordings. Public channel, we've covered events at our library, at our COA, at Historical Commission, all sorts of other public events. And we've even covered events in Free Town. And we put it on the education channel so that people in Free Town could see them, such as the fireworks and the parade, and the Christmas tree lighting. And we actually helped with some of the town meetings, where there was some overlap initially with the Lake District proposal, and also this last town meeting. We've helped with that, too.
I just have one last question. So that, so the, you know, the whole eighty-five would go directly to Lake Cam, right?
Yes.
Is that negotiable?
It is negotiable.
Okay.
But the, the amount of service provided will be proportionate to what we do in Lakeville.
Yep.
So we have revenues of around two hundred and fifty-five thousand in Lakeville, so it'll be about a third.
Okay.
Of what we do in Lakeville. Again, and that's dependent on us being able to actually get in and record that.
Yeah, understandable. Yeah, you can't, can't force your way.
One of the other side benefits here is that we also handle scheduling of personnel, and obviously, if you wanna continue on YouTube, that's fine. We'll continue uploading those, so your town hall doesn't have to. Those are, sound like small things, but sometimes they're not. But basically, taking the load off what town hall is doing in terms of cable access and putting it on us.
Gotcha. And if we have to go back to a Zoom world, is that something?
We, well, Lakeville, the town hall of Lakeville came to Lake Cam in late March of two thousand and twenty and said, we don't know how to do this.
Yeah.
Can you do it for us?
Yeah.
And we have.
It was definitely a rough beginning, you know, trying to figure it all out. But once we got a good.
For almost three years now, we've been, we've been providing, we've been hosting all of those new meetings. And initially, we helped all the members of the boards and committees get set up so that they, they can be heard and seen, and that we can put out a television quality product.
Yeah, that's great. Alright.
And we offer that to you also.
Alright, that's, that's good to know, definitely.
We wanted an extra step of actually buying webcams for those who didn't have them.
That would definitely help.
Train people one-on-one.
Yeah. That would definitely help a lot.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time.
Alright, moving on. Update from MBTA, South Coast Rail Project. Gene?
Okay. I have my tech guru with me.
Alright, perfect.
I'm moving my big paper aside.
Yeah. It's never that easy.
No, but I have Joe. Well, thank you. I've been excited to update the town on this. I apologize if it's behind you, so no neck craning, you could actually turn around and watch. We're, there's so much going on at South Coast Rail right now. You're seeing it, you're probably breathing it, you're probably swearing at it sometimes because it's a road closed or a detour you didn't know, but we do work hard to get the word out on it. So if you could, next slide, Joe, please.
Spoke too soon.
Oh, Joe. Thank you. So anyway, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of where we are right now, talk to you a little bit about the construction that you're seeing and will continue to see, explain what my community outreach process is, and I'll entertain any questions at the end, hopefully providing answers to those. So we have, on the MBTA side of the house, a new program manager, Jennifer Tavikin, a deputy program manager, Mike Fitzgerald, the senior director of administration as a former state rep, Randy Hunt, and I am the director of community engagement. So when this project was all MassDOT, I was South Coast Rail. We are now officially a huge MBTA construction project. We're on a par with Green Line Extension. These are the two biggest transportation construction projects of the Commonwealth right now. Pretty amazing. Next slide, please, thank you. So the good news is, we really are on track. We are on time, on budget, and our funding is all state funding, and it's in place. We're almost at forty percent on the Fall River contract. That's the one that was awarded earlier, a hundred and fifty-nine million. They've been going great guns. You'll see at the station in Asona how far we've come there. You can see the beginnings of platform. It's kind of exciting. We took the GM down beginning of, when did we do that, Joe, November? The general manager down to look at Free Town and to look at Fall River, and you can really see, our stations are not union station. It's a platform and a parking lot, canopy signs, that's what it is. But we call them stations affectionately. And the Middleborough and New Bedford and Signals contract, that's the four hundred and three point five million dollar contract. That's around twenty percent complete. That was awarded a little bit later, but they're gonna start going really in earnest next year. Still a lot going on. Just a point to let you know, Signals includes your positive train control, your dispatch, all the signals for all this stuff connecting Boston to New Bedford, Fall River, and everything in between. That entire piece of the contract was awarded in the Middleborough, New Bedford contract. So we were gonna, you know, put that aside, make that be a separate thing, we're not doing that. So that's, the other reason Fall River's ahead is so that when these New Bedford and Middleborough guys get done with that, the signals can be done for the entire quarter. If you were driving through Fall River last weekend, you saw five thousand linear feet of new track went in, and we did that in Free Town very recently. The new track is the continuously welded rail. So what we have out there, the lion's share of it is jointed rail that generates the clickety-clack sound you hear when freight trains go by.
Yeah.
Turtle speeds. This allows for no more clickety-clack, a much smoother ride, and definitely has an impact on noise. Free Town and Fall River, as I mentioned, they're really starting to look like stations. Our midpoint of construction is anticipated for next spring, which is pretty amazing. So this, the map on the left is the inset of the bigger map, which is showing you the six stations and the two layovers. I would just like to point out for everyone's edification that the layover facilities, Weaver's Cove in Fall River and Wam Sutta in New Bedford, are not maintenance facilities. This is literally where we lay the trains over at night. They're cleaned, they might get a little oil, but they're not gonna have any major maintenance. That is not what happens. They are, in the winter months, plugged in. These are diesel locomotives. They're plugged in, so they don't run all night. And very basic, the layover facilities have six sets of tracks, a crew building, and they're secure facilities, so I just wanna assure people that maintenance is gonna be conducted at larger facilities designed for maintenance. And those are the stations, Fall River Depot, Free Town Station. We have Middleborough Station, which is literally five-eighths of a mile from where the Lakeville Station is on the current Middleborough line, Church Street in New Bedford, and the New Bedford Station's down at the Wales Two parking lot area. Thanks, Joe. The Fall River, just an overview, we got about twelve miles of track on the secondary, Fall River Secondary, two stations, Weaver's Cove, eight bridges, ten grade crossings, and ten culverts. We have no bridges on the Middleborough secondary one, which is kinda nice, but we have double the miles, track miles, four new stations, the layover at Wam Sutta, eighteen grade crossings, we've done a lot of those, and eleven culverts. And as I said, the entire system is an infrastructure piece. So in the ten week look ahead, some of this stuff isn't really exciting, installing sheeting, retaining walls, that's, we just did the track replacement from Terry's Lane to Weaver's Cove and Fall River. We're doing new track installation, have done a lot of it already, Colonial Drive and Forge Road North, and Richmond Road South, new track between Richmond South and Forge North at the crossing. By the way, that crossing is the most complex crossing in the entire project. So not only was it a nightmare trying to figure out how we're gonna make it work, but it is, there's an awful lot of stuff that had to be done there because the track cuts the road a diagonal, that's not the ideal.
Yeah.
Golf Course Road down in Fall Rivers, new track, Colbert Reconstruction. We just did a couple of those, and we'll be doing some more. And then the station work continues, as well as the cable plowing. Yeah, so here's the next, a bigger contract. There's a lot more going, going to be going on here, retaining walls, track reconstruction, drill shaft operation, ballast mats are really helpful for noise and vibration mitigation. They're going in in a lot of places. Slope and ditch excavation and protection, drainage along the right of way. That's a big deal because the right of way is extremely narrow in very many places. The last thing you wanna do is have drainage become an issue for either the railroad or the people near it. Middleborough Station's coming along very nicely, and we have site development at Church Street. They're actually gonna back out of Church Street right now and do some more work over at Wam Sutta and the New Bedford Station. Rail and tire replacement, Malbone to Chase, and then we just did, and we have more work to do, but the lion's share of the work at Leonard, North Resict, and Old Colony and Middleborough Avenue is, is complete. Well, not Old Colony, we still have work. Reconstruct, realign the tracks for Taunton, that's ongoing. East Taunton, remember where the purple dinosaur was? That's where the station is in time.
Yeah, I've seen the construction there.
No golf balls anymore.
I know. Can't want them all.
I wanted that dinosaur, it's gone. Conduit, track construction, and the layover. And the layovers are gonna be the same. So great crossings in Free Town, Beechwood Road was a little bit of a challenge because it's itty-bitty, and there was an awful lot of work going on in there then, and I had that conversation. Richmond Road, also a bit of a challenge at Beechwood, and then again at Forge, but we're moving along nicely, all of those. We will be attacking very soon, Chipaway Road, Chase, and Brayley Road, those crossings. And there'll be some sticky wickets. I'm a little concerned about Brayley Road because there are some people that are right there that we're gonna have to work with so they can access their properties. We will do that, that's what outreach is about, right, Joe? Next slide, Joe. So we also have off-site mitigation, most of that's intersection work, does not apply to Free Town. What we are doing as a, as a sort of historical and archaeological piece of mitigation here is the Asonic Path, which is gonna be over the same, the great crossing from, you know, where. It's gonna go into, at Forge, into the wooded area there by the, by Forge Pond, and connect to a different resource area that was disconnected when we closed a crossing. So we're doing a walking path with a historical sign on it, have maybe the Ice House on it, it's kind of exciting.
That's awesome.
It is.
We really need that.
That is so cool, I can't wait. So we're doing that in Free Town, not in Intersection. Fall River, Middleborough, and New Bedford all have some intersection upgrades, mostly because we did traffic studies and we have to make sure that the intersections in stations can accommodate the additional traffic. And in New Bedford, they are going to have a pedestrian bridge that'll cross from Purchase Street, clear over both sides of eighteen and a cushionet, and flock people at the platform in New Bedford, which is nice because Route eighteen's a superhighway. It's not supposed to be, but it's very dangerous, and we don't want people crossing there. Next slide. So construction typically, seven A M. to seven P M. These shorter days have had an impact on the total hours they're out there, but they don't have any hesitation of putting lights in to keep it going. They wanna get as much done as possible. We have outages. They're usually three to five days. Literally means we're taking the track for the freight out of service so we can get in there and do the work under the track. So that's Colbert Bridge, grade crossing. We work in close collaboration with Mass Coastal Railroad, the freight operator, to make sure those outages don't impede their business, and we can get an awful lot done if you close it for twenty-four hours and get it done. We literally can do an entire grade crossing over a weekend, as opposed to multiple weekends. Pest and rodent management, that's something that we have to, we have a lot of trouble with that initially in the Fall River area, seems to be under control. We disrupted habitat when we did some tree clearing. And then dust control, I had a call today from somebody who was concerned about stone dust. So that's gonna happen, they're doing a lot of ballast letting the track. Whenever they redo the trash, you're gonna have the dust, and we are constantly monitoring it. We have all the data on that, that we amass and record and explore. All of our contractors and site personnel are complying with health and safety regulations with respect to COVID-nineteen. And there's Free Town Station, how many of you remember it? No.
Eighteen forties, huh?
Yeah. So remember, in the eighteen thirties, railroad started crisscrossing the United States. This, this line, these lines here were in the eighteen forties.
Wow.
And they ran until nineteen fifty-nine, and they stopped mostly because of interstate highways, and everybody post-war having a car in the driveway, and then they weren't sexy anymore, and they ran into financial difficulty. So a lot of them kind of felt the rack and ruin, and yet now, anybody who drives under twenty-four for, at peak period especially, recognize that we need alternatives.
Yeah.
Next slide. There's our station, the Fall River Station, that's clearly a few weeks old, still green, but there's actually even more work that's happened there right now, that's. But there's actually even more work that's happened there right now. That's the platform area. Next slide, Joe. And Freetown. You can't really see much of the platform, but we've done a lot of the side and prep. So, all of the stations, with one exception, are side platform, which literally means, here's the platform, here's the rail. East Taunton has tracks on both sides. It's called the Center Island Platform. So, theirs is a little bit more of a complex structure. Ours is, this one here in Freetown is going to be pretty much what you see throughout the system. More. Look, rebar, wow. Platform.
What are all those walls?
Oh, there are, a lot of them are sheeting walls, support walls, and they're also, that's the foundation for the platform. So, the platform has to be a high-level platform so that you can board from any car. If you have a wheelchair or stroller or anything else, they, they no longer tolerate the mini highs, the different heights. It's a eight-hundred-foot high-level platform. That's what we're building. This one is super cool. I hope you have a minute. This was the one I was telling Jimmy about, the accelerated bridge construction. We did a bridge called the Asonic River Bridge, which is in Lakeville. And we built it off-site and literally rolled it sideways down the track and plopped it in place. You have to watch out for time of year restrictions, right? Make sure the fish aren't there.
Yeah.
It, it was super cool. And the old bridge, the whole thing took eleven days to plop in place and get rid of all the other stuff. Do we have a minute to watch the video, just real quick?
Yeah.
Joe, is it not here? Oh, yeah, you were. I was gonna say, good, watch this. This is cool. And they really move that fast.
Wow.
It's amazing. There's the ballast, there's the rail.
And you have a train.
And, wait for it. Almost camper. That, that was very exciting to us. That's our, that's our largest bridge in the whole project, and the fact that they did it so successfully. Plopped it in place beautifully.
Just like, that's great.
Pretty big deal. I don't think we have much, oh, yeah, community outreach, I meant. We have the websites. We encourage people to sign up anytime at the South Coast Rail at DOT.state.ma.us. We send out forty-five hundred e-bless every week to people. We encourage the towns to put those e-bless on their websites because when we do an outage, and you'll see in that depiction there, we can show the detours. We can tell everybody the when, the where, and the why. And it is really helpful. People just wanna know in advance. They don't want surprises. Who can blame them? And then also, Joe and his crew will go around twenty-four hours in advance of an outage particularly, and flyer butters. So, they have the physical hand flyer that says, "We're going to be inconveniencing you for this period of time. This is what we're doing," and with our numbers on it, our contact information. We also have a hotline. It's typically answered by the contractors between seven AM and three-thirty, but sometimes it waits a day. We are, we pride ourselves actually on our responsiveness. And so far, we've done a pretty good job. If we miss somebody, let me know. Next slide. And that's it.
Alright.
So, that's my update. I tried to expedite it to the extent possible. One other quick note. Mass Coastal did have night trains running. We found that it was the safer way to do business. We weren't tripping over people. They're gonna continue that until January eleventh, and then they're gonna go back to daytime operations until about April eleventh. I have not heard a single complaint from anyone about the night trains, and they're not running at two AM.
Yeah.
But it is, it's, it's worked out really well for the freight operator and for us. And then finally, I need to get in touch with you to set up a wayfinding meeting. We talk about signage and just let me know who you want at that meeting. It's an opportunity to look at what the MBTA does, and if that works for Freetown. Doesn't, where doesn't it, why doesn't it, and see what we can do. Questions?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. So, one, is there gonna be like a red light or like a traffic light coming out onto Main Street, or do we think that?
I do not believe that's signalized. It has a dedicated turn lane.
Yep.
You also have line of sight, which isn't bad there.
Yeah.
And I don't think it would meet the warrant.
Okay.
You'd have to have X number of vehicles, and, and it will be peak period traffic where the queuing would occur. It wouldn't occur.
That makes sense. No, that's, that's totally, and then the other thing, so, I'm assuming there'll be like a parking, you know, a pay-to-park?
Yes.
There, is now, is that revenue a hundred percent go to the MBTA, to the state, or is it a town get any of that revenue?
Sometimes they have shared use agreements, right?
Yeah. Okay.
In this case, no. We purchased the property, MBTA purchased the property
Yep.
through their acquisition process, so it is an MBTA lot.
Yep.
And all the proceeds from that will go to-
Go to MBTA. That makes sense, just one, just curious.
That's a good question, because there are shared use lots.
Yeah.
So, somebody, in fact, in Stoughton, there were two, two lots in the downtown area that were kind of co-used.
Yeah. Have you ever tried parking there?
No.
It's a disaster. That's my wife parks to go to work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do we know it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you, Gina. That was awesome. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. We can send you the presentation too, if you wanna have it.
If you don't, yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can post that on, on our website.
Yeah, make sure, like, click on the YouTube link.
Absolutely. So, I'm gonna go out of order a little bit and jump to Lori, so we get the update for COVID-nineteen, if that works for you, Lori?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Is that cool with you?
Yeah.
Board health?
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so I gave you guys a copy because I know I've kind of thrown in a lot of numbers. It just seemed a little bit easier maybe just to have them in front of you. So, it has been busy. Total cases, case count for Freetown is one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine. There are currently eighty-six active cases here in town. The state does two-week timeframe, so I told the reports, they have November twenty-first through December fourth, which obviously encounters the Thanksgiving where there comes a lot of cases going on. So, in that two-week period, there was a hundred and twenty-seven cases. The positivity rate for that fourteen-day period, so basically of the tests that were done with Freetown residents, our positivity rate was at thirteen point zero eight, which was very high.
Yeah, that seems extremely high.
Yeah, I actually looked, you can look at it online, and I looked at all the, all the other towns in Bristol County, and we were the highest for Bristol County for that timeframe. Even higher than, obviously, Fall River and New Bedford have more cases because they have a higher-
But as a percentage, yeah, we're higher.
But that timeframe, Fall River was at nine point three eight percent, and New Bedford was at nine point one six. So, we, we had a lot of people that got tested, and of those people that were tested, the positivity rate was high. As far as case counts for the month, by month, September, we had ninety cases. One was hospitalized, and zero deaths, extreme no deaths from September to December. In October, we dropped a little bit to seventy-nine cases, two were hospitalized. November, we jumped up to a hundred and seventy-seven cases. We had four people hospitalized. And then so far, from December first to today, we are at a hundred and eighteen cases with two being hospitalized. The hospitalized number is probably a little on the lower side because there are some people that I reach out to and aren't able to get in touch with, so it's hard to say whether or not, you know, they were in the hospital. Some of them I find out after, so that number may, may not be a little bit higher. What I am finding is those that are hospitalized are usually unvaccinated residents. Vaccines, the ones that I'm seeing that have, there are some breakthrough cases. But those people that have the vaccine, what I'm seeing for the most part is they're having mild symptoms. Even with, you know, kids, there are some, you'll see there's some numbers with high kid cases. Usually with kids, they are having mild symptoms, and usually their symptoms last somewhere between one to three days, and then they're feeling well after that, which is good. What, I know George, when I spoke to you the other, last week, you were looking at, you wanted me to look at vaccination rates to see what they were. So, on this sheet here, you're gonna see there's two different columns. So, for the town overall, there's about seventy-two percent of individuals that have received at least one dose of the vaccine and fully vaccinated, so two doses of Moderna and Pfizer, and one dose for Johnson Johnson, were at sixty-five percent. And for you guys, I just kind of broke it down by age group and how they break it down by the state. So, you'll see that, you know, for that, this is, these numbers here are just for the month of December, for the counts. So, we've had, the two highest age groups were, the highest was thirty to forty-nine-year-olds, where they, seventy-three percent of them have received at least one dose, and sixty-seven are fully vaccinated. And then the other highest group you'll see is the five to eleven-year-olds, which they were twenty-one. And obviously, they're recently eligible for the vaccine, so twenty percent have received at least one dose, and nine percent of those are fully vaccinated. And then the numbers to the left, December thirteenth, so that's as of today. I had gone on the Freetown-Lakeville School District, and Freetown Elementary School had six new cases. Graves had one, and the elementary school had one, and the high school had two cases. And then as far as close contacts, there were thirty over at the elementary school. I'm assuming with the six cases, that's where the thirty close contacts came into play. And then the other one, I just, I included the numbers there so you have the totals for the whole year. And that obviously includes those numbers. For the school district, the two hundred and twenty-six, that includes both Freetown and Lakeville. They don't break it up as far as which Freetown residents and which are Lakeville.
Alright. Thank you, Lori. Any questions? No?
It's scary for the month of December.
Yes.
Because we still haven't got Christmas. I mean, we're dealing with probably the-
We're dealing with what was left over from Thanksgiving. Because the numbers have gone down since then. As far as the daily numbers, obviously right after Thanksgiving is when they kind of really jumped up, and then they've since kind of gone down. I'm sure they will ideally, you know, not ideally, unfortunately, come Christmas, they'll jump back up again. The other thing, as far as contact tracing, the state has us looking at, kind of doing more, focusing on schools and things like that to try to help because the CTC has since gone away. I know myself, and then I have Sopiums helping with inputting all the data. I know we're using the CARES money, which will end as of December thirty-first. I was talking, I got a call, actually my other town, but I asked about Freetown from the public health, local and regional. But basically, they had said that, I'm supposed to get a call on Wednesday, that Freetown is gonna be getting money to help out with COVID. They said it could be used for vaccines, it can be used for contact tracing, it could be used for materials or supplies or things like that. So, they're supposed to give me a call on Wednesday to give us the number of how much money that Freetown would get as part of that.
Is it state or federal money, do you know, or?
It's coming from the state. Well, I'm not sure where it originated from. It's actually the state who's gonna be giving us the money. They're gonna do it through MHOA, so Massachusetts Health Board Association, Office Association, that's where the money's gonna, they're the ones who are gonna kind of, they're gonna send us the check, and they're also gonna be the ones who we send all the information to as far as how we spend the money. So, that money would come to us, could be used up until June of twenty-twenty-two. And then in July of twenty-twenty-two, we'd have to do a report of what we spent the money on.
Yeah.
Do we have testing kits available for people? I understand the state is doing something, I'm not sure why.
Yeah, so they, they came out with that today and said that they were gonna give them to certain towns. I did look online, and Freetown is not one of the towns that-
Really?
Yeah, so I can try to, I'm gonna see if we can somehow get them for a town hall, but as far as what was gonna be offered from the state to residents of certain towns, I'm sure they look at certain numbers, and I guess, I don't know if it's the size of our town or the population. I know there's different things, but our town is not one of the ones that are gonna be getting those.
I think they really look at economic injustice, also, you know, what they, what they define as economic injustice, and they, they wanted to give most of the supplies to those towns, and that's why Freetown probably didn't qualify.
Yeah. So, it was like city like New Bedford, Fall River, things like that, Lowell, some of those, those are the towns that-
These are the rapid tests?
Correct.
Yeah, because you still have PCR, right?
What's that?
You can still, I mean, the PCR, PRC, PCR are still free. They're still free, you know?
Yeah, they still have the testing sites. I know the biggest ones around here are, the one at BCC and the one at the New Bedford, yeah, of course. So, yes, those are still being free of charge. This is just the, the rapid, probably by now that the state was gonna be-
Yeah, and I did see they're talking about doing some kind of insurance reimbursement for the rapid test, but, you know, I'm not sure how, that, that's been all ironed out yet and how that's gonna work, so.
Not yet, I'm sure.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you, Lori.
Yeah, thank you very much. Alright, so moving on, back to our regularly scheduled agenda. So, we will go on to a discussion and vote on to amend EverSource's road opening permit to allow work through the winter and discuss the hours of operation. So, we have a representative from EverSource, please come up.
Chair, I'm just gonna recuse myself. It's just discussion.
Okay.
Can you leave the room?
Alright, noted. Hello.
Hello, Steven. Thanks for having us back.
Absolutely. Why don't you say your name and just, for the minutes?
For the record, my name is Terry Forsinger. I'm the supervisor of rights and climate for EverSource Energy.
Thank you.
With me, I have Matt Maynes, our construction supervisor, and Charlie Kuntz. Jessica Elder, our rights agent, and you've seen her before.
Yep.
Okay.
And Karen Newell, our community relations liaison for Freetown.
Great.
Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Sam. So, we are here this evening to ask the board of selectmen to amend our existing permit that we have to perform work on South Main, to perform work through the winter and extend the working hours. We haven't started work in a public way. We received the permit today. We, we set a straw law there, I believe, right?
Yes, we, we did some environmental controls, correct, for that work.
Under the purview of the Conservation Commission's requirements. And we were in anticipation of receiving the permit. We received it today. There is a condition in the existing permit that requires that network start after December fifteenth. And that's why we're here before the board. We did send along a presentation. I understand there was some construction weather-related specific questions at the last board of selectmen meeting on November fifteen. And I, I don't know if you saw, did you have opportunities to take a look at that, or I could-
I, I didn't, I did not. I, uh,
I agree, I look better.
Flew in last night very late.
I have three copies. Send them to you. Sure, okay. And so, basically, the driver of the project of reliability, the installation of the conduit that we're installing will eliminate the need to install poles and more wires in the future. It creates redundancy in the system, an ability for us to do, use automated switching so that we can keep residents energized. We've got a lot of outages in this area, and I know we, we touched upon this in a previous board of selectmen meeting where that is a big driver for these projects, for this particular project. It's a new intelligent automated outage restoration scheme to reduce outage sizes and durations. Gives us the ability to take people that are on one circuit and switch them over to another so that they are energized sooner. And so, the new underground circuit will put two-thirds of the town's residents on new and more reliable circuit breaker source, which we don't have right now. So, the driver is a benefit for the residents of Freetown. It's a significant cost for the company, but there's a real need here, and that's what, what has focused our efforts here. The, there's also at least six new large solar projects planned, and they're in our, in our queue right now, and they cannot be supported without this new infrastructure. The two new underground circuits will be added to interconnect customer projects, and they'll improve long-term liabilities for the east side of the sonnet with the new source and switching options. And as I said, it'll eliminate the need to add more underground work and add more poles and wires in the future because- And add more poles and wires in the future, because we'll do this all at one time. And the additional circuit uh conduit allows us to utilize that in the future, uh without digging up the road again.
Yeah, like the. What is the nature of the work that's gonna be done during the winter, like I, I see that being, you know, difficult, just based on frozen ground and everything else and. I mean, I don't know anything about construction, but that just seems like a logical kind of difficult thing to do.
Right, so um Matt can speak to that, that's why we understood that there was some construction-related questions, some, you know, coordination with snow. This time of year, fortunately, we've been blessed with a nice stretch of warm weather, but um we do this all year round and um.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking to take advantage of the good weather we do have right now, you know, we do get breaks in the winter, we would like to be out there. Um we would like to complete the full scope of the project, which in the public way is six manholes and. Uh two to three thousand feet of conduit, um some of that conduit is on the station property. Um we have already installed two of those manholes on the station property already, so we're trying to build out of the station. So what we were able to do, when these couple slides kind of highlighted, is we changed our work practices to deal with winter, you know, the temperatures, the snow. Any plowing, um and we've pretty much been able to limit it down to six nights of road plates. So there's six manholes remaining to be set. It's a two-day process, at the end of that first day, one road plate would be in the road. We obviously wouldn't coordinate that before any snow was scheduled to come in, and then once we get all six of those manholes set. We will not be using another road plate for the rest of the project, so we've been able to um. You know, come up with a duck bank installation procedure where we're backfilling and paving every single day. So this slide here kind of highlights that, um we do have a formal winter work policy, you know, twenty four hours before a snow event, we get all. Equipment, materials, everything off of the road, so any plowing will not have to interfere with the construction. Um I talked about the road plates a little bit, and we have a twenty four hour contact system. I listed my number here, uh Dennis Malloy is the superintendent for Riley Brothers, and we have Riley on the system. Twenty four hours a day, just in case something did come up with project, um they will be able to come in and, and deal with that.
Okay. Gotcha, uh so Jim Rizendi's back, do you have any questions or concerns, he's our, our resident specialist and things of this nature, sure.
Yeah, just a, I'm not sure how you uh you dig, you set, you pour concrete, you backfill, you compact, and you pave in one day. I've never seen that done, um but hopefully you have something to show us. Um but today, we still have problems with the existing patches, there was no compaction. We get a lot of settlement, Riley Brothers is up there to fix the potholes, but they're an everyday thing. Um I'm not sure during the winter how the town's gonna deal with that, especially when they have to do the plumbing. Patches are our biggest problem, um I guess, the next problem is when you work in the wintertime, it takes you twice as long. You deal with frost, the cold weather. South Main is a very heavy use uh road, you got thirteen hundred trucks a day from stop and shop. Um you have many construction vehicles of which probably happen fine, but um short of that is it's. A real traffic nightmare as it is, and to go in the wintertime and then take twice as long to do a project is gonna tie South Main Street up. For that period, um we haven't seen anything from Mass Highway that you people have permission to work in the wintertime. That's um, as I asked Gene, even N B A T A is not allowed to work. On Mass Highway streets during the wintertime, and you guys are here looking to work in town. When you can't work on state highway portion of it. So, you know, I'm not sure, unfortunately, the D P W um supervisor isn't here. But he was pretty clear last time that working through the winter didn't make sense for the town Free Town. And I'm gonna stick to the same thing, I don't think that we should deal with something that's gonna take twice as long when, in the good weather. You know, it's a lot less time that you don't tie it to South Main.
So we did have a meeting with um the highway director um uh last week, um and um the, the interim town administrator. And we did ask Chuck if he had concerns, he also indicated that he has some street work planned for this winter.
Unfortunately, Chuck had the, the work tonight and he wasn't able to get here, but um as far as what he told me last night, he's still in the same position that. The work should not be done in the winter because it's gonna create traffic problems, uh hazard problems when he has to go out with the plowing and sanding. If you guys don't have a real need patch, which to date you have not, um it's just gonna make it that much worse.
So that's different than what we understood from Chuck on Thursday's meeting, we had a meeting with him and, and Deb Patty. And uh he said he had confidence in EverSource's work. Uh he also indicated, as I said, that he had some planned projects, street work, um for this year in the winter as well. Uh that the construction season is, you know, asphalt and hot mix, it's available all year round, Riley Brothers makes their own, right? So we have that available and um the need is for us to get in there now. As a public utility company, we don't build things until there's a need, the problem is, is that there's a tremendous amount of permitting work we have to do. So we're always behind the ball in meeting that need and getting these things um addressed. This could very well delaying the project, and we're talking about thirteen, fourteen weeks. Um our intent is to get in, do the work, get out and come back in the spring and restore curb to curb, which is also not our policy, we don't do that. As a public utility company, we have to be prudent with costs, the driver for us is the project need, and also the fact that we could get this work done this year. Um this calendar year is what we were trying to do, um as you know, we've been trying to work with the town. Um to address all the concerns that they had, we overlaid plans, unfortunately, a lot of the infrastructure that the town had for, for uh. Plan, record plans and data didn't match what was actually in the road, we went back in, we did test pitting. Um we've come back and, and uh understanding that there's still questions, that's why we um set up a meeting. Um with the town administrator and um Chuck Buster Thursday. As far as the Mass D O T permit is concerned, they do allow work if you file with Mary Jo Patty. Um an exemption, and they are willing to grant that to you, and so that is something that we're working on. This South Free Town, this South Main Free Town section is a continuation of the station work that we did. Uh in addition to all the additional information and the sidewalks that we've done and the conversations, multiple conversations we've had. We've had, I've had, you've had with, with Chuck out on site, um you know, we, we. We've been responsive, um Chuck has said that, when there was a concern, uh within two days, we were out there and we addressed the concern. We'll continue to do that, Matt has provided on the PowerPoint his contact information, and um. This is available twenty four hours, so if you have a problem, we will come back and fix it.
Yeah, and as far as the patching goes, you know, we did at least four weeks worth of test pits, to my knowledge, we got one call about a test pit patch. And we went out there the very next day and corrected it, if there is any locations that there is an issue with, we'll have it fixed tomorrow. That's the response where we're looking to provide, Riley provides their own asphalt, their own concrete, their own mobile mixing trucks. And they have this thing ironed out where we can do that every day, and we are confident that we can, can get this done.
And so just to clarify, so the, the work, you know, obviously you're not getting this work done by twelve fifteen, that's when it's supposed to end, so you're saying there's six nights of work?
So there's, there is six manholes to set.
Yep.
Which are about two days apiece, I've already test pitted for them in that initial phase of test pits, and then there's the conduit installation that's gonna be between the manholes. So that is about a two-month period. Now, our ask is not to work in the middle of a blizzard, it's not to work, you know, if we get three snowstorms in a week, we don't wanna be out there the entire way. If we have two weeks of, you know, somewhat clear weather, that's when we wanna be out there.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I just ask one more question for a little bit more information on the solar, that you say that this is the help. Solar that's not really on that substation, that's on another substation, to be able to tie back in, I guess, of South Main?
We have the actual specific solar projects listed right here. And we can get you a copy of the sound from if you have.
I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, um so there's at least six new low-powered solar projects planned on Ford Road, Simmons Street, Corey Drive, Locust Street, and High Street.
So all of those right now are on another substation and not on the, it's on the substation, right, that you're working out of?
It'll be impossible to serve these new customer projects using only overhead wires, because it requires three circuits where we only now have one. So that's a big driver for this project as well, the customer work. And in addition to solving reliability, supporting future customer work, actually, in the queue of customer work, applications that we are reviewing right now. Um the town will get a, a curb-to-curb paved road, which we don't do, and that road is at least six to eight years old.
I am looking forward to that, that's, that's a definite.
But it's also in good shape, let it be noted that the road, yeah, although maybe the pavement was six to eight years old, it's, it's in good shape, so.
Yeah.
I don't wanna, I just wanna make it clear that we're not getting something that, you know, we have an old beat-up road.
And, and there's, yeah.
I, I, it's things, sorry, Trevor, that we don't have, we don't have Chuck here or Deb, because we have now you saying something.
Is Deb with him?
She, she recused herself from this.
She's involved, I think she's involved in, with solar, solar projects.
So she.
So she has her, yeah.
Any way to loop Chuck in by phone? I just, I mean, I just don't, I mean, we, we are.
It's up to the selectmen.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the.
Yeah, I just don't wanna put him on the spot, I mean, I, I can step out of the meeting and try and call him and see if he's willing to, to come in on, in the meeting.
He said he was gonna try to get here when we get done with him, but I can just check with him that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, we really don't wanna take up more of the board's time.
No, I understand.
No, we understand.
It's just, it's like, it's, you know, if we had a lot of roads in town, it probably wouldn't be, you know, such a point of emphasis, but this is like our main. Drag where you have so much commerce that goes through there and, you know, Stop and Shop and now Copart and a bunch of other, you know, companies are using that stretch all the time. So, you know, it's important to, how we function.
If I, if I could just. Decision that won't hurt us or anyone in the long term, you know, because it's not our goal, so.
Yeah.
As, as far as the traffic setup goes, um we have been out there doing the test pits, we've been taking the single lane. And we've also kind of designed our logistics plan to maintain that single lane, you know, so it hasn't been all that bad out there.
Yeah.
And that is the intention to keep it that way.
Okay, yeah, so it would never be totally closed, right, always at least one lane. Yeah, I remember that, I just, yeah. And you know, like, my, my perspective at least is, don't know anything about this, how this works, and the real, like, Mr. Zendys, he does this kind of stuff for a living, he owns a company that. You know, builds roads and does things of this nature, and he's, you know, I like, I need to lean on people that know what they're talking about, you know, so.
Sure, these last two slides, we, we don't have to go through them now, but they do give some details on the manhole and conduit installation. As far as, you know, the process for that, there's some pictures in there, just to help answer any of those questions. He wasn't.
No.
Could the board vote subject to Chuck's, I mean, we work very closely with the fire department in every town.
Yep.
Because the roads are their purview.
I hear you. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, I think we should, we can vote subject to Chuck's approval, um just to make sure, and then, you know, and any kind of stipulations that he kind of adds in there. If there's anything specific, because we need, you know, we do need to make sure that, that things, you know, I can, I can see it going poorly, but. I'm gonna listen, take it at your word, I have no reason not to, you know, I, well, um if there are other manholes or other, you know, the test pits that haven't been fixed, I'm gonna. Try to get a list of those, if, if there is any, get those over to you as soon as possible, so we can jump, yeah?
I think the selectmen ought to retain the right to shut them down at any time that you feel that um the project is not proceeding according to what they're saying. That the trenches aren't backfilled every night, they're not using plates in the middle of the night, for the main trenches, the manholes, they have to use them, there's no choice.
Yeah.
But the main trench, if they think they can do it today without the plates, but I think the selectmen should still lead the control between the selectmen and Chuck. Chuck have the right to shut them down if he feels that it's unsafe because of winter conditions or the operation because it's too cold.
Yeah, it is, I, I'm, I'm with you because I, I'm scared of plates being on the road in snowstorms, right, like, you're not gonna see them if it starts coming down heavy. And they can get maneuvered.
Yeah.
Yes, I was just gonna say, there are some details here, I know we didn't get to all the slides about how they're pinned and how they're firm.
Yep. I mean, this all doesn't, doesn't really mean much to me, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it, it comes down to the fact, you know, this is uh standard practice for us, we run about thirty five crews every single day. We maintain that crew comp throughout the winter, you know, in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, some very busy cities. We maintain this winter plate process, you know?
Yeah.
Anytime we think a snowstorm is gonna come in, all of those plates come up, regardless of what we're doing.
Yep.
Uh because there's only six manholes to do, you know, it's only a total of twelve days, we can plan that around the weather uh pretty confidently, where. We will not have a plate out there, you know, during the snowstorm.
Alright. Alright, so with that, so um. All in turn a motion to amend the uh EverSource road opening permit to allow work through the winter and discussion, uh and, so hours, sorry, actually hours of operation. Did we talk about this?
So, yes, so we would like to work seven days a week is the ask.
And right now, it's what, five days a week?
The petition is in um condition, but I understood from uh the administration of the processes, we'd have to come back to the board of selectmen to work beyond five days a week. So that's why, that's the ask.
I mean, I don't have, I, we have actually less traffic on the weekends, obviously, so there's probably, not, that's, I don't see an issue, I don't know if you guys have any.
Works will be hours, I mean, I just, you know, if you're out there jackhammering at something, you know, six in the morning on a Sunday, I have a problem with that. So I guess.
Yeah, it really, we like to say seven to five, you know, generally when we're getting dark so early, we're out there, we'll, we'll be four or five. But seven o'clock has been our start for the test pits, we haven't had any complaints as far as the noise.
Yeah.
You only work in daylight?
For the most part, for the most.
Yep. Alright, so. And so, sorry, so just to be clear, so the hours of operation, it currently is, it, it, it's just not stated right now, we, we wanna have some definition around that, or is it?
It's not in the petition, it's not in condition?
It may be defined in the street, street opening permit thing today. I'm not sure.
Who, do you know?
I don't think there was hours, it was just Monday through Friday.
And, and you wanna have Saturday and Sunday as well?
That's the ask.
Okay.
And to know that um when the highway surveyor did come in our office, I think he didn't think Sunday was a great idea, but. You may wanna circle back to him, or.
He was talking sadly.
I think he was, oh, he was amendable to six days a week when he came in the last time to my office.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to put it all back onto one guy, but, you know, all this has to come back with Chuck's approval before, which may actually say that's on.
Yeah, I, I like in Chuck's approval and then Chuck's ability, if something's, he has the ability to shut it down.
Right.
Right, you know, get whatever's fixed before we proceed.
That's fair.
Okay. And I'm gonna put the Chuck's or the board's ability to do it, in case something happens to Chuck, you know, so. Alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment um for the road opening permit for EverSource. I'm gonna put it at six days a week, so Monday through Saturday. And uh, you know, extend it through the year, or sorry, through. Beyond tw- twelve fifteen. With caveat that either the highway surveyor or the board of selectmen has the ability to shut it down at, at any time, alright?
With cause or just?
If, yes, I mean, there, there's gonna be a cause, obviously, I, I'm not gonna put that into the motion or the agreement, I mean, if. We wouldn't shut it down if we didn't have to, right, if we don't, you know, but. I don't wanna put, start putting definition around that, because that might get sicky on our end.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm just concerned about mobilizing and then the board changing their mind, would that happen, or?
I, I mean, I know, I don't see that happening, but.
Not short of Chuck saying to us.
That's right.
Once again, we're not specialists in this, if, if Chuck tells us, hey, this is dangerous, we gotta shut this down, we gotta shut it down.
There's a reason why we rely on Chuck and Mr. Zendys.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we, we've been working closely with Chuck, so I would be very interested to get his take moving.
Alright, and all this is subject to, to Chuck's approval, so do, do I have a motion?
Motion made.
Do I have a second? Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you guys.
We do have. We do have a draft petition, um, we could give you, um, for a signature.
Yeah.
Sort of six day work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Six day, yeah. You need anything additional?
I may add a piece about them having the ability to shut it down. I would say that would need to be added to this before you would sign.
Yeah, I can come by and sign it tomorrow and get it to you.
So do you want, I mean, just amend that? Yeah, that the highway surveyor or the board of, or a selectman could shut down the project if necessary.
You're good.
If necessary, okay.
And then I'll call them in when it's, when it's arrived.
Okay, thank you, good suggestion.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. All right, so this is, um. Discussion and vote on closing the transfer station at one P M on Friday, December fourth, twenty twenty one. So. That seems fair to me. That's the day before Christmas? Any, uh, any thoughts on that? Anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the transfer station at one o'clock on Christmas Eve.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, discussion and vote to approve the liquor license renewal for twenty twenty two listed below. You have Circle K Mass-, uh, Circle K Massachusetts LLC, D V A K number seven, five, one, eight. Independence Harbor Inc., M and H Grandpa's Place Inc., D V A Grandpa's Place, M and H Juniors Inc., D V A Juniors. K and E Liquors Inc., D V A Crossroads Liquors. Mason Road Food Mart Corp., D V A Prime Express, and Veterans of Foreign Wars Posts, uh, number six, six, four, three. So I'll entertain a motion to approve all those license renewals.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, approval and vote to approve class two and class three license renewals for twenty twenty two listed below. If anyone has an issue, we wanted to just put it on hold, also read through them. Alfred R., um, uh, shit, I, I, I know him, okay. My, my, yeah, I know, I can't, whatever, I've never, I've never seen his name written down. My, that screwed me all up. But, uh, D V A Ray's Garage, um, Armored Clermont, D V A Clermont Auto Sales. Basic Equipment Inc., Basic Used Car and Trucks and Equipment. Christopher, Christopher Cabral, D V A C J Auto Sales. Copart of Connecticut, D V A Copart, Craig Cabral, Evolution Auto Sales, Inc. That, um, Dean Markell, Miller's Auto Sales, uh, D P F Enterprise Inc. Mark H. Bullock, D V A Triple Way Auto Sales. Chop Ahead Industries, Inc., D V A Chop Ahead Custom Cycles. Uh, Michael J. Burns and John Mello, D V A J and M Auto Sales. PJ's Tires Inc., Robert M. Alderson, uh, D V A Bob's Motorworks. Roger L. Denell, D V A Bowler's Garage. Sam Man Corp., D V A Sam Man Auto Sales. Joseph F. Costa the third, D V A J and T Auto Salvage. Milton C., uh, S. Westgate Junior and Milton S. Westgate the third, D V A Wesco, Wesgate Auto Sales, or sorry, Wesgate Auto. John Broden, D V A C S A Auto Parts. Jeff Reposa, D V A East Freetown Auto Salvage. D B Fabrication Inc., D V A Bug Stevens, uh, Freetown Auto. Big Wheel Truck Sales, Inc. Daniel Crispum, D V A Hometown Automotive. Donald F., uh, Mendoza Junior and Vlad- Vladimir Kurschak. D V A D and M Auto Enterprise. Millis, uh, Industries, D V A Pick and Pull. John LaRondo Junior, D V A John's Auto Sales. Phew.
Yeah, that was a good one.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve those, uh, class two and class three license renewals for twenty twenty two.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion and vote approval of license listed below. So this is, um, entertainment license. I'll just read through these. There's only four. Please hold, there's an issue. Uh, entertainment license, Independent Harbor. Entertainment jukebox and automatic device license, Veterans of Foreign Wars Posts, six, six, four, three. Auctioneer license, Joseph F. Costa the third, D V A J and T Auto Salvage, and a motor vehicle graveyard license. Millis Industries, I N C, D V A Pick and Pull. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those license.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, keep it moving. So this is, uh, discussion and vote for the approval of renewal certificate, certification, uh, certificate for, um, certification from the. Al-, uh, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, A B C C, for twenty twenty two. So what's the renewal certification?
It's just a form that A B C C requires us to fill out that kinda recaps the licensees that are not renewing. For twenty twenty two, which would just be Matthews Italian American Kitchen Incorporated.
Which is sad.
Yes.
But yes.
And so it just recaps that and then asks you to sign up on it.
Okay, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna hold, we're gonna pass over on sixteen. We're gonna talk about another meeting. Seventeen, discussion and vote to approve the request proposal for operations project management for the council on aging, so.
So we, uh, working on the addition and the renovation of the council on aging building. The building committee and the selectmen have, uh, authorized a COA subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
The next step would be to hire, uh, uh, project manager for the, for the building, for the whole project. Um, state actually requires it, where you have one point five million, you're expecting to spend one point five nine, you're required to hire it. So I basically took the document from the police station and tweaked it.
Perfect.
I have sent it off to town council. I have not heard back, but I would expect it to be okay. So this is just sort of a formality that, um. We're ready to put this out. A couple of things you might wanna look at is that it talks about having the subcommittee. Uh, prove, you know, that these, the, the applications and determine which ones would come in for interviews. So I just wanna make sure you, you, that the select board is okay with the COA subcommittee doing that.
I am okay with that, I think, because I think they'll, they'll be better qualified to make those, make that kind of assessment. Once again, not something I specialize in. I mean, I'd kinda, I'd rather put that on the board that's made up of.
And I think that might be how the police station works too.
Yeah.
And then the, the dates, I've kinda pushed it out. I think, um, sending it out January third, expecting, um. The proposals back by February fourth and so on and so forth, but I. Am hesitant because I, the, the, the subcommittee is not set up yet. Like, we haven't gotten everybody, uh. Solidified, so I'm, I don't wanna put the cock for the horse. If we don't have the committee set up and let them at least have maybe one meeting before this goes out. We may, you know, have issues. So I'm not quite ready, but I, I know that it's been a, um, priority, so I got it done.
Perfect, that's great. Yeah, and, and I think this is a formality, you get this, I'll, I'll, we'll prove it, or I'll, we'll vote on it, I'm gonna say pending, um, general councils or councils, you know, sign off on it. And then we just have, this is one less thing we have to worry about once the committee is set. So I think this is, you know, get as much of this kinda stuff done. So we don't have to worry about later on. All right, so that's, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request proposal for, um, operation, operational project manager for the council on aging. Um, pending general council's approval.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Eighteen. Discussion and vote on the approval of the contract between the town of Freetown and Comcast for cameras at the highway department. How much are those cameras? So this is gonna be page one thirty. One thirty seven. I feel like this is deja vu, maybe with cameras for something else.
Transfer station maybe?
It's one sixty four ninety a month, but the installation total is two sixty nine ninety five.
And this is obviously something that Chuck is interested in having, right?
Correct, and the union has approved it.
The union's approved it, and that seems like a reasonable price to me. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between town, Freetown Comcast for cameras at the highway department.
Motion made. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nineteen. This is the, uh, vote on whether to conduct an organizational study for town hall. So I'm looking forward to it. Debbie wanted to speak to this a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I haven't been with the town hall that long, but one of the things that I think is a little apparent is that. We have maybe not balanced work between departments. Uh, uh, I, I mean, I think the majority of the staff is, has a lot of work on their plate. And what I think would be extremely helpful in determining where we put our resources or move our resources is to have this organizational study. So the Collins Center, uh, I think it's a division of, like, UMass, I've worked with them in Hanson. They will come in, they're gonna, uh, interview all the departments and say, okay, what do, what do you do? What are you responsible for? And then they're, um, gonna do an assessment and say, based on what your current staff does and what, you know, what they're doing, we think. It may be best to, as we recently did, right, split the board of health with the building departments. They may, we've already done that, but that might be a suggestion that they would make to you. And, and that's something that, um, I think would be extremely beneficial moving forward, especially when, you know, we are thinking about adding staff. Town planner, maybe conservation agent, things like that. I think it would be good for them to really look at the whole. And give guidance to the select board on how to move forward.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
And it just, sometimes you need an outside perspective. I'm sure, you know, we'll probably get some pushback from people, folks who've worked in town hall, I get it. Someone's coming poking around, asking questions. I can see that being a little pushback in that, but I think that, you know, at least my experience, I work with a lot of consultants.
Yeah.
So everyone freaks out when a consultant's walking in the door.
I know.
But, but I think we need to do it for the town.
Right, it's to help them ease the burden, not to take away something. We're not in there trying to figure out how to take away jobs.
Yeah.
And I think we, we, we have to just make sure we communicate that, right? So that people aren't caught off guard and understand like what we're trying to do here.
I definitely think that, I mean, the majority of the staff has a lot on their plate, so you're, you're not gonna find a lot of. Gaps and people just sitting around doing nothing. I think you're gonna find quite the opposite.
Yeah.
And I, I like I said, and I think in order for you to move forward and start thinking about hiring staff, you know, set aside the limitations on space. Is, okay, what is it, where does it, where are we lacking the most? What do we need the most? And this is the direction we should move forward in. And maybe that does mean you have, um, uh, just say, a full-time admin that does, um, conservation and zoning board of appeals and the soil board, right? Because these are all, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just totally speculating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that would help you, and I think it definitely, um, is long overdue. And the next phase of this study would be a wage and classification state, uh, study. So. Once we say, okay, this is what we should have, then the next piece would be, how, how much, you know. How much, what classifications of employees should we have and what should they be paid? Because that's been a longstanding issue within the town that, I, I think we've made strides towards paying everybody equal pay there.
But this will, this will lay the groundwork for that.
Right.
Right? Once we, once we under- understand that, that the structure and who's doing what, and then it's easier to then assign, you know, dollar values to what that, they should be compensated and. Compare that, you know, apples to apples with other.
And I, I believe we have the funding to do this piece of it.
Yep.
The next piece will have to be funded through town hall, you know, town meetings.
Now, that was me, my next thing. We did speak a little bit about this stuff, but it, um, we're gonna fund this through our department, right?
Right, we, I, and I just have to just circle back to, you know, Ken, and make sure that we do have available funds in our, um. Budget, I don't, you know, but we're also looking at possible other things, so, you know, wanna make sure, confirm that we.
Yeah.
So the important thing here that, uh, people will understand is this would be unbiased.
Exactly.
Yep, yep, fully unbiased, yep.
And this is what they do, right?
Yeah.
That, that means a lot to, like, like, because it, it, it's unique, right, being a town organization? It's not like, it's, you can't, it's not the same as going into a business and having to do that kinda structure, that kinda review. So I think that, I like this.
And they do that. I mean, they've done other towns, so they have that benefit too of seeing what other towns and how they work.
Exactly.
Um, and, and how they operate. So I really do think it would be a benefit to the town to do at this point in time.
All right, so with that, so I think it's great. I'll entertain a motion to approve. The, so, yeah, I guess I'll make a motion to, to vote that we go forward with a, um, to conduct an organizational study for town hall.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, discussion and vote to call and set the date for the next annual town meeting on.
Not town meetings.
Sorry, annual town election. Been a long day, on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty two. No problem with that?
Motion made.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion and vote with the cable access, um, companies utilized beginning one, one, twenty, twenty two, M C C A M or Lake Cam. So that, that's what we're currently using, M C C A M. So, um, I kinda wanna look at the, this more, and I don't wanna, I don't feel comfortable making a decision right now. Any comments or concerns?
No, I'm with you.
Um, I totally agree with you there.
And I understand that there's some, some other kind of, you have to figure out that other part.
Right.
About the twenty twenty one contract. Okay. So, yeah, so we'll be back, we'll, I'll circle back, I'm, I'm gonna have to do some digging on that. So we'll just move on from that, not put on today. Sorry if you stuck around for that, my bad.
No, I didn't, actually. Oh, good.
All right, um, so this is discussion of vote on highway surveyor's request to increase power rates for the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two season. So what they currently at? Should know this. What page am I, I'm one of one.
Uh, one fifty.
He's looking for five dollars, for eight, nine, and ten foot plows. He wants to increase it five dollars per hour.
So I wondered, do we have an estimate of what the?
What, like, other towns around?
And I didn't, I asked him today, um. Basically with the snowplow budget, what Chuck had said was they budget for a hundred thousand, but usually we spend three hundred thousand because.
So it doesn't really.
It was over, so, yeah, so if, if he hits too much, then he goes, because I wanted to make sure it was appropriated for it, but, um.
I don't think it ever is.
Yeah, no, so I, that's why I'd ask that. But in the memo that's in the packet, I have it right here. It details all the pricing.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now.
I don't think we have any choice there.
Yeah.
It's a problem everywhere, yeah.
And I, I think Chuck wouldn't, wouldn't ask for it if he didn't need it.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the rate increases, increases for the plow drivers requested by the highway surveyor.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, where'd I go? Twenty three. Discussion and vote agreement between the town of Freetown and Comcast Business for Fire Station Three is Comcast bundle with additional static I Ps needed for I M C integration with the Police Department Communication Center. Phew, that's mouthful. So, uh, yeah, this has been a long project they've been working on, right?
Correct.
All right, and I think we're all, we, we wanna have this kind of, the, the files get all integrated. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. All right, uh, this is town of Freetown Comcast Business to install two lane lines, need to operate an alarm system at the council aging. Anything special need to know about that that's not obvious? I mean, I think if we, we need the alarm system, we need the alarm system, right? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have ambulance abatements, so. Ambulance abatement is an amount of one hundred and sixty four thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars and six cents in write-offs and the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and thirty one dollars and twenty nine cents totaling. One hundred and seventy two thousand, four hundred and eighteen and thir- dollars and thirty five cents for the amount of November twenty twenty one, right? I'll entertain a motion to approve these abatements and write-offs.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion vote to approve Heath Chase's plow driver for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two season. Any issues with Heath Chase being a plow driver? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve Heath Chase's, um, plow driver for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two season.
You made the motion, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh. Okay, so now we're done with, we already did the.
Number twenty seven?
Yeah, so now it's twenty seven to you, Jared.
All right, twenty seven, discussion and vote on the new fee structure for the board of health licenses and permits.
Basically what was happening is we were having certain buildings getting, um, kitchen permits, but they have twenty locations. And so it might take three days or five days for an inspector to inspect all twenty locations. And so it might take three days or five days for an inspector to inspect all twenty locations. So Dale came to me and he said, can we do something, and I said, well, you know, the board of selectmen or the, uh. Board of Health, can we change the fee schedule, so that's what we're changing, just to say, if you've got twenty locations, you're gonna pay a little bit more. Twenty dollars for each additional location after they're first.
What kind of, what are, what are we talking about here, what kind of location?
Food establishments.
It would be like Crystal Springs School.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Um, and then I think is the other one, Taylor Academy, I think it's those, like those school settings that have multiple kitchen facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems completely reasonable, and, and it came from Dale, and you bet it, it's not fully viewed, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, I'll entertain a motion.
When would these be effective?
Uh, should we do it calendar year?
Maybe, or?
Do I do it?
Yeah, I'd say it would make it twelve, one, one, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, that works, so effective, sorry, I should say that in the motion.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm, I entertain a motion to change to the new fee structure for the board of health. Licenses and permits effective one, one, twenty, twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Town administrators report.
I just have a few things, and I'm gonna work on um bringing some more information to the meetings, but one of the things I just wanted to. Um, acknowledge is that, you know, the staff and employees of the town work hard and they apply for grants. And they don't have to, and if they didn't, we wouldn't really know whether they did or they didn't, but, so. I know the highway department, Chuck McHumber and Mike McHugh, they, they applied for a um wellness grant, and they were, they got five thousand dollars. Which is gonna be used to uh buy an electronic sign that we can use when we have emergencies or we wanna notify people or whatever. So I wanted to congratulate that department on doing the work and getting that grant. Also, the Vicki King at the transfer station applied for a recycling grant, she uh was awarded, uh, well, she. The town was awarded a seventy-eight hundred dollar grant, and she, the, the transfer station uses it to get rid of the mattresses a lot of times. And use that to get rid of the mattresses. So, the police departments and the fire departments have gotten quite a few grants over the last couple of months. Um, and I'm just trying to put together a list, but that'll be forthcoming um as well, but it's more of a recognition.
Yeah.
On their efforts and, and, and the benefits of the town um that we receive for them doing that. So that's kind of my point in that, um, and then the last point I wanted to make is we are, uh, we. I'm requesting for applicants from each precinct to sit on the C O A subcommittee, so that we can complete that subcommittee.
Yes, so if you're interested, please reach out.
Yeah.
To.
So we can get that project moving, and I will, I think, eh, you know, in the future, I have more announcements, more information that I. Bring to the table, things that are going on that we need around town, or the good job that the employees are doing. Um, uh, in our town.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, appreciate that, alright, so, we're good, so uh with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.